This meeting of the Select Board on January 23, 2024 is called to order at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. First on the agenda is executive session to review and respond to open meeting law complaint pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A1 filed by Patrick Higgins on January 8, 2024. The Board will convene in an open session after the executive session.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to review and respond to an open meeting law complaint pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1 filed by Patrick Higgins on January 8, 2024. The Board will convene in open session after the executive session.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, Select Board meeting is resuming, 6:27 PM. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes tonight. All right. Next on the agenda is the recognition of Dick Pont, Friends of the Center for Active Living.
So thank you all for being here, and Dick, thank you for being here. We want to recognize you for all the work that you have done as a tremendous volunteer and community builder. We have a certificate of appreciation for all of your energy, enthusiasm, and hard work over many, many years. We wanted to take this moment in time to recognize you, although it spans decades of all that you've done. But I'd like to read the certificate of appreciation into the record, and then I'll ask my colleagues if they want to share any remarks. But this certificate of appreciation is presented to Dick Pont in recognition of your service to the town and your commitment to the Center for Active Living. The Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Hingham, hereby takes this opportunity to extend our gratitude to you, Dick Pont, for your dedication to the Hingham Center for Active Living and to enhancing the quality of life for seniors in the community. We recognize your years of service on the Council on Aging, your initiation of the Hingham Friends of the Center for Active Living, FOCAL, fundraising group, and your longstanding involvement with the center. You have inspired many in the community to make volunteering a central part of their lives, and we thank you for your enthusiastic contributions. It's signed by myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and William Ramsey on January 23, 2024.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, come on up. Let me...
Liz was going to ask for objections, but clearly no objections here.
An objection is overruled.
I just, I'll be brief. I just want to thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition. I would like to thank my wife, who has been my heavy supporter, and she's been there for me every time I needed her, and I've needed her a lot, especially recently. I thank everybody that volunteered with me that along, over the years, whether it was teaching or being on the Council on Aging or helping to develop the Friends Group. Thank you very much for the recognition. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, do you want to come up for a picture?
Sure.
Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, come on up. Sure. Congratulations. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations.
Hi, Mary.
Thanks for being here. Did you want to add anything? It's okay?
Yeah. Did a good job.
Yeah, that was great.
All right, excellent. Congratulations and thank you. All right, next on the agenda is to confirm the appointment of Akashi Shetty to the Human Rights Commission.
I'd make a motion to confirm the appointment of Akashi Shetty, a Hingham student, to the Human Rights Commission as recommended by the School Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next on the agenda is appointment of Democratic Registrar.
I'd make appointment to appoint Mark LaBelle as a Registrar for the Town of Hingham to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you to our volunteers. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a change of manager at LSF Hingham LLC doing business as Legal Seafoods, 96 Derby Street, Unit 325. I think I saw, I thought I saw Donna.
Geez, Donna's there.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, hi. Sorry, I knew I saw you. Welcome.
Good evening. So my name is Donna Cruz, and I am a paralegal with the licensee, and we are petitioning to change our manager to Alicia Yates. I do believe she's on also. She's been with the company a little over 10 years, so she does have a lot of experience. And if you have any questions for her?
Okay, excellent. Welcome, Alicia.
Hi, thank you.
Do you currently work in the Hingham Restaurant?
I do, yes. I've been here since December 6.
Okay, excellent. I mean, I think the application is complete. Do you have any questions?
No, it's complete. Looking forward to continued great service at Legal Seafoods.
Yes, and I would just note that there's a Corey form.
Yes.
That process has all been completed and cleared as well. Bill, any questions or comments?
I have no questions. Everything seems to be in order.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, ready to take a motion?
I move to approve the request of LSF Hingham LLC doing business as Legal Seafoods, 96 Derby Street, Unit 325, Hingham, Massachusetts, for a change of manager from Dorothy M. McCoy to Alicia Yates in accordance with the application for a change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on December 28, 2023, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It's approved. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
The Hingham Restaurant looks fantastic. Love the renovation.
Thank you. Excited to see you. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Public Safety Facility update. Bob Garrity and Paul Callis. Do we have Matt Hennessy on as well? No? Just the two of us? Two of you? Come on up. Yeah. Do you want to sit at the table? Wherever you're more comfortable.
There's a PowerPoint. I'll show that.
You can still...
It's high-tech now, Paul. I don't know if you've noticed...
It's not just behind you. It's over there.
The wireless.
Thank you. My name is Paul Callis. I'm with Hill International. I'm the project director for the management of the Public Safety Facility building, and I would like to do a project update for you. And then on the agenda, we would like to ask for approval of change order number eight, which we'll talk about very shortly. With me is Bob Garrity, the Chairman of the Public Safety Facility Building Committee. And the construction update is as follows. If you've driven by the site recently, you'll see that structural steel is going up. There will be another delivery of steel and the crane, I believe showing up tomorrow once again to continue that ongoing work. We've been hauling contaminated organic soil off-site. The contaminated soil, I believe, is completely gone. Now we're dealing with some organic soils that are in place, and the organic soil is not suitable to construct on because it's, you know, kind of mushy, basically. And we're finding that as we excavate for the garage foundation, which is on the west side of the site. We're backfilling some of the foundation walls, and we're installing drain piping and waterproofing on the building. And drainage manholes and storm piping, of course, that goes with the drainage piping is being installed in there throughout the site. So that's what's been happening recently. And what's coming up in the next near future here is continued steel erection and detailing of the steel structure. And in the middle of February, you may have a topping-off ceremony. And when you, exactly the date that you want to have it and so forth, it'd be up to you and how you want to plan it. However, there's a big piece of steel that will be, that is painted white, that will be on-site for all to sign before it's hoisted into place with a ceremony, however you determine you want to do it.
Okay. Sounds exciting.
Looking forward to it. I'm not sure what it is, but I'm looking forward to it.
There's continued concrete placement of the garage foundation, footings and walls, waterproofing the building perimeter. I've got some pictures of all of this coming up here. Backfill of the perimeter of the building and on the inside of the building in between the structure. And concrete masonry units, you know, concrete block masonry for stairs and elevator shafts are going to be starting up very soon. And with the completion of the footings and foundations on the interior of the building, underslab mechanical electrical plumbing lines will be installed. So that's what's coming up in the near future. Here are some photographs of the work as it's been going on. As you can see, this is the structural steel frame being installed, and that's ongoing for probably about the next month. Steel goes up very quickly when you see it. However, the tightening of the bolts and making sure that everything is plumb and everything, that takes some weeks after the frame is installed. So that'll be, there'll be iron workers on-site for a while, about a month and a half. Here's another picture of that same frame. This is looking from the corner at Lincoln and Seaport, which would be the, that would be the southeast corner of the site. Next slide. And here is the metal decking that is in place, you know, on a couple of floors. And next picture shows, you know, kind of the underside of that where the, where you're down at the, at grade level. This is waterproofing of the, of some of the slab in the wall. And more waterproofing on the, on the, on the foundation wall and some of the drainage piping. And this picture is of the building mock-up. This is on the very corner, and this is a mock-up that does, takes all the different exterior materials of the building and then, you know, kind of constructing a trial. This gives the architect an opportunity to be able to, you know, confirm that everything's the way he's intending it to, and also sets a standard as far as the quality of the rest of the construction. So this kind of like, the approval of this mock-up is a big deal because it kind of sets the bar as far as the, as far as the quality of the construction of the rest of the building.
Has that approval already happened?
No.
No, okay.
No. It's still in process.
Okay.
Yeah, they haven't completed it. Here is some electrical conduit that's being installed, some drain pipes, and more of the same. There's, this is all throughout the, in different locations around the site. Here's a picture of some of the formwork for the foundation wall. And you can see some of the wall that's completed there. And yeah, and then the last picture is the other side of the, the rendering of the other side of the building. This would be the side that's facing onto Lincoln Street. So that is what is happening right now on the site.
Great.
Then we wanted to request approval to your committee for change order number eight. And change order number eight is comprised of a number of cost proposals or potential change orders that have been thoroughly vetted by our team, the designer. These have been, you know, essentially individually all negotiated over the last two or three months. They've gone back and forth, and we are recommending this change order that is a total of $177,179.64. There are a number of the, many of these are, you know, really typical cost changes that, that occur on most every project in some manner or another. And there are a couple of them that have to do with the soil conditions. The over, number 33 is overexcavation of the building foundation. That is a result of the, of the organic soils. We have Part 1, the black soil and PCB removal is included on here. There's another change proposal here for ledge removal. We encountered a lot of ledge on the project. And, you know, probably foremostly, the one that is the biggest number on here is costs associated with garage miscellaneous metals. And this is an issue that occurred from a problem in the, in the bid documents where the stairways, bollards, and, you know, small metal items, but you can see by the price, it's not really very small, were not listed in the work of the miscellaneous metals filed subbid. And this is work that would have been included in the bid price. This isn't work that you're paying, in any way paying twice for or anything like that. This is, you know, work that was in the scope of the documents. However, because of the way the bid laws are formatted with who can bid what work and the way it needs to be presented to them, this was left off of the bid documents. And so we're, we're ending up having to include this via change order.
Okay. Paul, I'm just going to stop you for a second and see if my colleagues have questions on the update, and then we'll move to the change order, if that's all right, just because it's a separate agenda item. Bill, did you have any questions or comments on the update itself?
Yeah, so I guess my two questions are, are we still on track with the budget? And are we still on track with timing?
We are on track with the budget, and the, we are behind the original completion date, and that was as a result of the contaminated soils, the asbestos that had held up the stoppage of the project. So the new, the substantial completion date as a result of that is currently, I believe it's February 25th or February, it's the very end of February. It's February, and it's got a 2 in front of it. It's like 25th or 27th, something like that.
Of 2025.
Of 2025.
Yeah, that's... Twenty-five, okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. And are the, these updates or photos online somewhere, or can we add them?
Yes, they are.
They are? Okay, so people can...
I think they are.
Okay, follow along. Great. Joe?
I will say that I have heard from residents who've noticed what's up there, and they're, they're pleased. So thank you for your work. Looking forward to continuing to see the ongoing progress. That's it.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. All right. So then we're also considering approval of the Public Safety Facility Project Change Order Number Eight with Colton Antonio Incorporated. Did you want to share any more detail about the change order?
I'm open for any questions that you have for it.
I had a question on, obviously, I know we've had some significant weather recently, but the December winter conditions, was that more than what was expected?
What that change proposal is for is that when the project was delayed due to the asbestos soil, what that did was it had moved the schedule for concrete from, you know, September and October into November and December. And that direct cost for what it costs to be able to build that same amount of foundation work, that is a cost that's due to that delay, and that's what that change order is for.
Okay.
So it's basically a weather, the additional work, because it was now being performed in some frozen conditions and everything, they had to put blankets over it and heat it a bit.
Okay.
So it's just the additional work. You know, we didn't have to approve any amounts for like extended overhead or anything like that because we have a no damages delay clause in the contract. But you do have to pay for any additional costs that are out of pocket from the contractor when there's a delay.
Okay.
They did get a time extension for all of that, and that's already incorporated. It's already been approved, and the contract is a change auto.
Okay. And we're still within the contingency budget, correct, even with this change order?
Yes. The, actually, if you go to the following page here, I believe that's the change order itself. And then the following page has our budget summary. And we have two highlighted items on this project budget summary. One is the line item for change orders that has grown to be $487,000 as a result of this change order. And if you scroll down a little bit, there is the line item for the heart, for the construction contingency. And you will see that that shrank by, you know, that amount of money. And that $487,000, that's all of the changes. That's all through change order eight. That's all. That's not just one. That's, that's all of them.
Okay.
So right now, we have, as, after, after this change order, we have $1,121,768 as the balance in our contingency for change orders.
Okay. So that, okay, so that amount includes change orders one through eight?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Joe, do you have any questions specific to the change order?
Yeah, I just have one. So focusing on the RCP 21, the $72,000 plus, I understand that that did not go through a competitive process to get that cost, but have you gone through your own internal process to assure yourself that the price is competitive?
Yes, we have.
And what was that process?
The, well, the, the process is reviewing all of the, all of the pieces, all the steel that this comprises of, and comparing it with the, what, you know, essentially what's in our construction cost estimate that we had originally, and seeing that it, you know, roughly corresponded to be roughly the same for the same amount of work.
So it's in line?
In addition to that, the design team, who is responsible for this in the first place, thoroughly vetted it as a result.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
By the way, the building committee has reviewed this and recommended approval of change out number...
Yep.
Excellent.
And I'd like to add, there's a credit piece in change out number...
I did see that.
I saw that. I was hoping it wasn't a tape-out.
Can you go back to that, to that slide with the credit on it? I was going to wonder what it was for, the previous slide.
Right, this is...
Yep, there it is, right there. Scroll down.
The 37?
It is for $37,000. Costs associated with RFI number 130 to deduct sandblasting. That sandblasting is all on the concrete walls that are on the backside of where the garage is going to be. The quality of the concrete finish is such that we don't, the architect doesn't feel we need to sandblast them. Oftentimes, you have cast-and-placed concrete walls that look terrible. And, and so the architect includes in their specification that if it's not suitable, that you need to sandblast it because nobody's going to like it. Well, this is kind of like concrete that, you know, you're used to seeing probably 30, 40 years ago, where it actually has got a, that came out pretty nice. And it's in a location that isn't really exposed to the public as well. So it made sense to, you know, to take this credit.
Any other questions?
Could you just discuss the overexcavation cost, the $47,000?
Yes. The overexcavation cost is at the east side of the project. There, there is some organic soil that was found in various places on the site that wasn't detected in the, all the borings that we did on the project. So that soil has to be removed, overexcavated essentially, and then replaced with, with dense grade, a kind of structural gravel, you know, that you see like on, you know, on roads before they pave them, so that it has a sufficient bearing capacity to support the building.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. I'm ready to take a motion.
I think we got two motions.
All right. I'll make the...
We didn't discuss this one yet. Right, we need to go back to that? Number seven, 10?
Number 10.
10.
John is here for part of that discussion.
Okay, but we should do the change order first, right? It's a separate vote?
Yes.
I'd make a motion, authorize the town administrator to sign change order number eight with Colton Antonio Incorporated for the Public Safety Facility Project for the cost proposals outlined in document G7012017 in an amount not to exceed $177,179.64.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Bob, and to the committee for your continued work. I know there's one more thing. You're going to stay up here? Okay. Next is discussion and potential vote regarding assignment of Hill International Incorporated to the LIRO program, L-I-R-O program, and construction management P-E-P-C. Do you want to walk us through this, or did you want John?
Sure. So about, approximately a year ago, Hill International was purchased by a company called GISI. And GISI... And thank you, Bob, and to the committee for your continued work. I know there's one more thing, you're going to stay up here, okay. Next is discussion and potential vote regarding assignment of Hill International Incorporated to the Liro program, L-I-R-O program, and Construction Management P E P C. Do you want to walk us through this, or did you want?
Paul.
Sure. So about, approximately a year ago, Hill International was purchased by a company called G I S I. And G I S I owns a number of different companies, and Hill International is now just one of them. However, what they had determined this year, a year later, is that they want to break off the northeast region of Hill International, which is essentially our New York office and our office that we have here in Needham, and make that part of a design company, architectural and engineering firm called Leroy, that's located in Boston in New York. So that, so that both, you know, essentially, we're going to change our name to Hill Leroy, and everything is going to remain the same, as far as our contracts, the people that you're working with, everything is the same. However, the name of the company is going to change, and the location where the invoices, you know, come from and get paid to is going to change. But everything else is going to be exactly the same.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Joe?
Has this been reviewed by town council?
It has.
Do we know if there's a change in the financial resources of the entity that we're contracting with?
Put that to Paul. I don't know for sure, but I would surmise that the resources are greater rather than less.
That, that is good, I guess, I'm not sure, are we prepared to vote on a surmise, or do we want to get that confirmed?
I would have to be able to come back and furnish that information.
Unless, Bob, have you looked at this?
Just the name change. And from our perspective, we didn't get at all into the financials of the new entity versus the current entity we're much more concerned with, just consistency of all the people that are currently on the project who we're quite pleased with.
Because I, I know when the, when we looked at Hill International, we were very impressed. And I just want to make sure that we're not substituting an entity that is, for some reason, not intended, but for some reason, less impressive to the town in terms of its financial resources.
Maybe John can explain?
John might.
John, can you explain the review that you did, and if, if there was any financial due diligence as part of that?
Yeah, we have not received, to answer your question, Joe, we have not received any of the financials from Leroy. We got a request to assign the contract from one entity to the other, so we placed it on the agenda when it came in, but we have not been provided financials from the new company. Happy to dig as deep as you want us to deep, we can come back at the next meeting. I would just need kind of a, a sense of how far you want to go, and what information you want us to take a look at.
So I'm not even sure, John, whether it be you, or having Michelle, or Bob's committee look at it.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, making sure, I mean, if, if Hill is being absorbed into an entity that includes Hill and other entities, then it's a done deal. If, if in fact, some of the assets of Hill are being stripped away and moved to, you know, some subsidiary that we're not aware of, then that's something different.
Well, one thing I can add is that there is a company called G I S I that owns Hill, owns Leroy.
Right.
That is, owns all of, and some other companies as well. And they're the, you know, so I think ultimately, their resources, I guess, which.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah, I mean.
Are present.
I, I think that's right, the question is, are their resources on the line? Or are they being basically isolated from this transaction?
I don't believe that G I S I is isolated from the transaction, I believe it's there, I think they're the ones that came up with this, with this idea of doing this. And I don't know, I just really, I don't know many other details I could really.
Yep.
I could really say.
Joe, the original contract that the town has is with Hill International directly.
Right.
And this would be an assignment of that contract to Leroy Program and Construction Management P C. My understanding is the, the contract and the employees are moving over to that, to that entity, so I think we'd have to do due diligence on that entity if that's what we're looking for.
Well, I know we did due diligence at the initial stage when we were figuring out who we should enter into a contract with, and I just want to make sure that we're not letting something inadvertently slip through the cracks. But I don't think you're talking about digging deep, I think it's, it's understanding what the, what the corporate relationship is. I mean, the easiest example, and I'm not suggesting it as a requirement, is, is doing the consent to the assignment, you know, subject to a guarantee by G I S I for performance, and then it's done. But that's not what's on the table here.
Is there urgency associated with this? If we take another week to evaluate this, does this impact the project schedule and the work that's being done on a daily basis?
It is not going to impact anything to do with the, with the Public Safety Facility.
Okay.
We're continuing to work.
Okay.
We're, we're working as if there is, like, as I said, no change except for where the bills come from and where the payments go.
Sure.
Really. And the, this Friday is our last paid period that we, our Hill International, and then starting Saturday, our time, cards and everything go to Hill Leroy.
Okay.
You know, but everything is the same.
Okay.
So, could we get the information so that we can make an assessment by this Friday? That would be.
We are meeting again on Friday.
Okay. I will work on getting that and get that to you.
Great, thank you.
So that I can make sure that I get the right thing, I, perhaps John could reach out and ask, send me an email and say what it is that he wants us to send, to where.
Yeah, I'll have a discussion with John, he'll have it with you, and we hopefully get this resolved by the end of the week.
Okay.
I don't mean to preclude anyone else from having.
No, I think, I think that makes sense. Do you have any questions?
No.
Right now?
Nope.
Okay.
I mean, just so you know, typically, when there's assignment of something as simple as a lease, you make sure that your, that the lessy is, at least is financially stable as the prior lessy when there's the assignment, so, nothing more than that.
Alright, excellent, yes, I think it makes sense just to get a little more information, make sure everybody's comfortable, and hopefully we can wrap it up by Friday.
Sure.
Excellent, thank you, Paul. Any questions or comments from members of the public on that? Okay. Alright, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, it was time.
Alright, excellent, well, thank you, great work.
Thanks.
And thank you again, Bob, appreciate it. Alright, next on the agenda is 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion. Article A, Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund.
Want me to take this?
Sure.
So we have a number of articles, and this is the first appro, or the first tranche of articles for favorable action consideration by the board, so we're starting with the low-hanging fruit, and that usually begins with Hannah Lincoln Whiting. So, the Hannah Lincoln Whiting article, I'm just going to read these background informations because they're written purposefully, and there's a lot of good information in them, so I just, I don't want to summarize these. The Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund was established in 1915 pursuant to the will of Bita B. W. Bacon in memory of her mother to be expended in relieving the necessities of the deserving poor or unfortunate of Southingham. Grants from the income of the fund are made at the discretion of a committee of three members, one of whom is elected each year by the town. As of December 31st, 2023, the fund assets totaled $15,398.45, of which, 398.45, was available for distribution. The principal of $15,000 is held in trust and is not available for distribution. So this year, we're recommending, we have to appoint two people this year, Laurel Cosman of 16 Queen Anne Lane, be reelected as a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years, and Karen Sadlin of 33 South Pleasant Street, would like to be reelected as a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of one year.
Any questions or comments?
Do you know the third member of the committee?
At the top of my head, I don't, I can certainly find out for you.
No, that's okay, no problem. And what, what's the balance of the fund?
$15,000 needs to be remaining in there, they'll be distributing 398, $398 issue.
Kind of around 1915, it's amazing.
Yeah, yeah. It's a May's tradition.
Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay. Alright, you want to just, do you want to vote them individually? I guess we need to, right?
Yeah.
So I'll move to recommend favorable action on Article A.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, Article B.
The next one is to assume liability for DCR properties, so the DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, as a matter of policy, requires that the town assume liability if it is to perform any of this type of work within, within the town. In accordance within the stat, with the statute, the town would assume liability for all damages to property sustained by any person as a result of DCR work performed by DCR. Again, this is an annual perennial.
Yep.
Questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article B.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, Article C.
Article C, this is in essence the town report, which of course includes a lot of things in addition to these reports of these committees, but these are the committees that will be highlighted in the report this year. The recommended motion should include discharging the following committees with thanks, the Accessory Dwelling Unit Study Committee, the Climate Action Planning Committee, the Master Plan Committee, and the Tree Preservation Study Committee. I'll note that Climate Action and Master Plan are both in the implementation stages, which is why, and, and those committees have been formed, which is why we're dismissing, with thanks, the prior core committees. All chairs have acknowledged and that they would be, that they will be being dismissed. Again, with thanks.
Okay. And we've confirmed that these are all the reports?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Do, is, do we still have the Ware River Water System Transition and Evaluation Committee?
We do.
We do.
No other questions?
The, the master plan is on here, too, Master Plan Committee?
Yeah, that will be dismissed with thanks, that's one of the ones that will be dismissed.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
The last report, and then, okay.
Discharged, not disposed.
Okay. And there's not a report by the Master Plan Implementation Committee, correct? Okay.
Yeah, they have their first meeting in December.
Yes. Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article C.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, Article E, salaries of town officers.
So, salary E sets the salaries for a certain town officers, including the Select Board, the Board of Assessors, the town clerk, and the municipal light board. And again, this is a perennial law.
Yes, and there have been no changes?
No changes, the same as it's been since I've been here, anyway.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
None.
Okay, questions or comments from members of the public? I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article E.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, next is Article G, transfer from the stabilization fund.
So Article G is our original stabilization fund that the town's had for many years. It contains the bond premium from some of the old-school excluded debt projects, and we've, we need to use that bond premium to pay the interest costs on the debt service for those projects, so, excuse me, every year, you probably recognize this number, we recommend transferring $178,836 from the stabilization fund to offset the costs of some of our excluded debt, so it provides a slightly lower tax rate, so we're proposing to do the same thing in FY '25. We have this projected out through FY '30, when the amount will drop to $113,000, and then it will go to FY '35.
Questions or comments? Bill, do you have any questions on this one?
No questions.
Okay. Questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article G.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next is Article M, acceptance of easements.
So, acceptance of easements articles, article is also a perennial article, and I'll just note that the town benefits from many easements over private property throughout Ingham. From time to time, the town particularly, SCPW, requires new easements in order to complete roadway and other project, public works projects. At times, the town receives requests from private property owners to relocate easements held by the town on their property, and under Massachusetts law, the town meeting approval is required for the Select Board to accept such easements. This article would require, well, would allow that the Select Board, for the Select Board to accept such easements during the coming year, and thus to avoid potentially expensive delays and inconvenience to projects that benefit the town. This article is intended to solely, solely to cover easements voluntarily granted to the town, and would not allow the Select Board to accept easements that require funds to acquire them. Furthermore, the authority conferred by this article is not unlimited in time and is limited to the coming year. If continuing authority is required, the next annual town meeting may be asked to approve it.
Okay, questions?
Just to be clear, this authorizes, but does not require us to accept easements. Yep, no, no questions.
Questions, Bill?
No questions.
Questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article M.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next is Article V, Acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 31, Section 58A, Veterans' Civil Service Appointment.
Sure. So this article would allow veterans to exceed the maximum age limit under the civil service laws for, for original appointment as a firefighter or police officer by the number of years served on active military duty, but no case shall said candidate be appoint, for appointment be credited with more than four years of active military duty.
And Tom, this is in accordance with the state statute?
Yes, it is.
Yep. No questions.
Okay, yes, I know we discussed this last week. Do you have any questions, Bill?
No, I know, we obviously, we discussed it previously, but it obviously is aligned with our strong history of assisting veterans. It's also aligned with our goal of recruitment for police and fire. We've heard from both chiefs indicating that they, they are concerned about recruitment goals.
Mm-hmm.
And this will hopefully help that cause.
Yes, agreed. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
So I move to recommend favorable action on Article V.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously, great. Alright. Next on the agenda, Select Board FY '24 Goals and Objectives, Second Quarter Review. I'm ready.
Alright. So this is the review of the five, certainly not 40, but five goals that we're set. I'll just review the five categories, they will build the team, drive the process improvement to identify revenue opportunities, to implement the master plan, including climate resiliency and wellness, and then to certainly manage all of our large projects. So along the, along the, along the way, since our last update, we've hired and filled three of the eight positions that were, that were discussed as part of this goal through the override, and those positions are, the Assistant Town Engineer has been filled, the, the Program Coordinator at the Senior Center, the new Center for Active Living, and we've hired one firefighter. There are three firefighter positions pending, and the Sustainability Coordinator position is still pending as well. The, we've also hired, just FYI, I'd like to make sure people think that we're not just hiring those three employees. Some other key positions that have been filled are the Assistant Water Superintendent, we've backfilled our vacancy at the Conservation Officer, Social Worker, and Town Accountant roles, they all had recent vacancies, and we were able to fill all three of those. So that's great. And the Town Accountant role was a vacancy from a longtime employee that had been here for 23 years, so we're lucky enough to grab, to find someone with a lot of great experience to, to backfill that. All six municipal union contracts are currently, are, or. All six municipal union contracts are currently, or municipal unions are currently under contract, which is great. We will beginning, will begin the negotiations for the next round here in a couple of months with the personnel board for four of those unions. Two of them, the both DPW unions, are current and will be beyond the end of this year. There are thirteen individual employment contracts. Of those thirteen, that are all current, all thirteen of them are current, three of them have recently been done, three of them are actively in progress, seven will be coming up towards the end of the fiscal year.
Can I ask a question about that?
Of course, yeah.
Go back a second. So, why do you have individual employment contracts? You said that was for DPW?
No, this is just general. So it's myself, the two assistant TAs, the deputy chiefs, the chiefs.
Non-bargaining union?
Non, yeah, exactly. Yeah, non-union.
All right, I didn't hear that, thank you.
Under item two, drive the process, drive process improvement, we've installed and initiated and subsequently used ClearGov, our new budgeting software for the FY twenty-five budget development process, which has been well received, I think, by the, especially by the department heads. I think it's clearer for the, for the public, and Michelle hasn't kicked me yet, but she's managed her way to, through an implementation, which has been start and go, but, but certainly helpful along the way. So, thank you to Michelle for, for all that work. The bathing beach community room use policy is underway. That draft should be complete soon. We're meeting with the trustees to complete that, but it, the draft is in essence complete. We're just waiting for some final approvals. The select board chair has been issuing her monthly, monthly reports, newsletters, and we have a new communications team in place. The, they are called in-house alternatives, and they're helping us do a number of things, ongoing reporting out to the community, but a couple of large ones were to conduct a social media audit, and then, again, helping us plan a way to spotlight the department heads in ways that the public may not fully understand what they, what they've been working on. So hopefully all of that is well received. Item three was to identify some revenue opportunities. Art, you want to walk us through this one?
Sure. I'll just speak to a few points here. First, ongoing engagement with developers and property owners. That continues here with major property owners here in Hingham, as well as we've had the opportunity to engage with a developer or two. One, through a connection that we made through Mass Econ, a regional, a state-level economic development organization we joined earlier this year. We've been working closely with the HDIC to define a direction going forward. There's been, since we last spoke, there's been a significant amount of work towards developing a, a business summit that would bring town officials and business leaders here in Hingham and property owners together. We're working closely with the South Shore Chamber on that, and more will follow. We've also asked them to look very carefully at how to market Hingham in a, obviously, very competitive marketplace, and I think in two weeks, I expect to speak with them on the status of their research, looking at how perhaps ten other communities in South, mostly in southeast Massachusetts are doing exactly that. And we're also speaking with them about putting together an economic development plan that would look at how to best position Hingham, recognizing the important differences between South Hingham, which is a development center, the shipyard, which is an important developed asset that has quite a bit of infrastructure, as well as the square and harbor, which provide unique opportunities for the town and offer a, a number of opportunities for small businesses. And last, but not least on this, this list, thinking longer term, we're, we continue to explore access to MWRA water capacity. We've put together a regional coalition, if you will, that is preparing to embark on a first stage of research to identify exactly how we can actually consider going forward. We have an RFQ that's been on the street. We've got two responses, and we're evaluating them now.
Excellent.
Thank you, Art. Next page, under revenue opportunities, is some items from the Sustainable Budget Task Force, and Michelle will walk us through.
Sure, so as Tom said, the other bucket of the revenue opportunities came out of the recommendations from the SBTF report, and some of the ones that we had been focusing on over the last quarter were these four right here. So the real estate transfer fee, Tom's been doing a lot of engagement with the Mass Municipal Association, our legislative team, state officials at listening sessions that the lieutenant governor held, and some of the other communities on the South Shore. And recently in the fall, the governor included a real estate transfer fee proposal in her Affordable Homes Act that she filed, I think in October. Little different than the one we proposed, but still the same type of mechanism that we were looking at. Meals tax review is another one that we were really focused on in the Sustainable Budget Task Force report. There is legislation filed separately to allow communities to increase that by, to basically double it, points, another point seven-five percent. The governor, in the new municipal empowerment act that she just filed yesterday, also include us, included a small proposal in that, would be point two-five percent, I believe, in increase in meals tax revenue, but something that we're still definitely interested in. Property disposition, the Sustainable Task Force did a whole evaluation of all the municipal-owned properties and kind of narrowed it down to a smaller list, and this spring, the board has been supportive of submitting a warrant article to consider potentially looking at the sale of H Short Street as one item there. And then, as you know, the select board naming bylaw policy was approved in the fall as well, so that's yet another mechanism for some potential revenue opportunities for the town.
Great.
Thank you, Michelle. My next item is the implementation of the master plan. This is a multi-phased or a multi, a number of components to the concept of a master plan. In Hingham, we have the Harbor Master Plan. That, that work is nearing completion. It's being spearheaded by the Harbor Development Committee, and our office is on the second floor with Emily Wentworth and our engineer, JR Frye, and, and Art. So that work is continuing, and hopefully will, will reach completion here in the next few months. The Master Plan Implementation Committee, following up the Master Plan Committee, has held its first summit, as I said a little earlier, back in, in December, so they're beginning their work. And some next steps is here on, at the select board, we'll bring in the Emily Wentworth and Jennifer Orem from the second floor in the zoning and planning departments to give us a housing plan update, and then we'll have, we'll have Tom Carey and members of his team on the senior center building committee come in and help and, and give us an update once an architect has been selected for the feasibility study. Just a note on that, that I spoke with Tom as recently as last night, and the RFP has been approved by his committee and is ready to be issued. It'll, it's just be having dates updated, and it will be issued probably tomorrow.
Great.
And then, of course, the big thing are large capital projects. The new elementary school, if you haven't seen it, it's a miracle how fast that thing went up. It looks fantastic over there. They've got a lot of work to do still. They'll be coming in on February seventh for an update, and then you had, you received an update tonight on the public safety facility. The, as I said, the Center for Active Living feasibility study, that RFP will be issued in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours. And then, once we get an architect on, on board, then we'll be, we'll bring them in for an update. The Harbor Wharf walls and design permitting is underway. The Route Three A sewer improvements, the design and engineering is underway, and the ARPA funding request has certainly been submitted to Plymouth County. And then, the ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan that Art spearheaded is being presented to the select board in November, or was presented to the select board in November, and to capital outlay this past December. And then, of course, we completed the purchase of, and the acquisition of Thirty Summer Street back in November.
Excellent.
Progress.
We've been busy.
Been busy.
Yes, lots of progress. Joe, any questions or comments?
I really appreciate the, the work here. On the, just, just two questions. Tom, you mentioned the bathing, bathing beach community room use policy.
Yes.
Is a draft going to be circulated to select board?
Yeah, so I, so the next step is this week, maybe this, probably next week, we'll be meeting with Alan Peralt, who is the chair of the Bathing Beach Trustees.
Right.
If, I don't expect any additional changes. If he has none, then it'll be in new final draft form for your review, and we'll send it out to you as soon as I hear from him that he's good with it.
Oh, great.
I don't want to send it to you and then have him still have changes.
And then, Art, you identified a regional coalition with respect to the MWRA.
Yes.
What about, who are, who are members of that coalition?
In addition to Hingham, we're talking with direct involvement with Abington, Rockland, Norwell, Hanover, Situate, and Cohasset.
The group, okay, great, thank you. No other questions?
Bill?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for your, all the work you've been doing, Tom, Michelle, Art. I know a lot of effort's been gone into getting us here, so thank you for all you're doing. On the, first, on the revenue opportunities, I know the, I was there for the governor's speech as well on Friday, when she talked about the municipal empowerment act. Do we know when that might be in place? Would that be the, this session? I didn't hear when she's, what she said.
So she's, hers, her plan is being put forward to the legislature for adoption, and that usually happens sometime in May? Is that right?
So we'd be looking at town meeting of the next year?
Yes. Yeah, it won't be state law for a while.
Okay. Also, you, you talked about H Short Street property. I know we, we, we've been discussing that internally and at our meetings. How are we doing with looking at the Cushion Street property? You know, that's a property that obviously is, is a desirable location, a desirable property, you know, given our, you know, financial situation. How are we looking with potentially floating that as a potential revenue source?
Yeah, no, we definitely could. You know, it's one, it, that building and that location has, because of the size of the parking and the size of the building, is potential municipal desired use there as yet undetermined. The, the H Short Street seem like the low-hanging fruit, because we're unlikely to be able to use it for a municipal purpose going forward, so disposing of that one, realizing some benefit from that made sense. I think there's very real opportunity that Three Oh Eight Cushion Street will be considered seriously down the road, but that's, you know, certainly up to you guys. But I would, I would recommend some robust conversation about that one, just to make sure that we don't sell it and then find out two years later, we wish we had it for another thing that we hadn't yet thought of. It's just got to be given some robust thought before we move on that one, just because there's so many potential uses for that site.
Good point.
Yeah.
Capital projects, Michelle, I think, I think you told me we are good with this, but the ARPA funding request, will that bring us to our max? We want to make sure we use every one of those ARPA dollars we can.
So we do have a plan to use every single dollar, and this one, this was for the design and engineering work, and you guys had approved that previously. I think there are a few more votes that we'll be looking for you to take in the next month or so. Plymouth County is requiring all of their member communities to submit a plan by March first on how we're going to use the money, so there's a few other decisions that we'll, we'll be presenting to you to just make sure that we're using every dollar, like you said.
Great. And then, lastly, on building the team, I know we're making some, some progress here, so thank you for that. Again, I, I think, and I'd be happy to take the lead on this, I'd like to meet with Tom, with you, and the chiefs, and maybe the DPW director, and talk to them about, you know, recruitment, and how can we get, you know, more individuals entrusted in some of these positions in town? You know, nationwide firefighter applications are down, police applications are down. DPW, throughout the Commonwealth, jobs are being unfilled. So we need to figure out, you know, how can we make our community a desirable location for individuals to come here before we get into a, a public safety issue with overtime forcements and, you know, firefighters, police officers working ridiculous long shift, or double shifts on a regular basis?
That's right.
I think, and I think one of the things we should do is, you know, we commonly hear concerns about the way our healthcare costs are structured, and I, you know, within the next year or two, I really think we should, probably within the next year, we should really look at, you know, can we restructure that and what the cost will be? And, you know, present that to our residents to say, you know, if we were to increase our healthcare percentages to maybe sixty percent or sixty-five percent, this is what the cost would be to you as residents, and do we want to do that?
Right.
I do think we, and it, it comes up in every collective bargaining discussion. You know, we heard it a lot from DPW during the DPW discussion, we're hearing it now. So, you know, maybe we look at that and break it down and say, this is what it would cost to raise it, to make recruitment in those jobs better, and then see what all the residents feel about it.
Happy to do that math and provide all of that to whomever wants to see it, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all of this work and putting this together so we can stay on track and, as we committed to doing this publicly, so residents can follow along as well. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay. Next is public comment. Any questions or comments from members of the public on an item we haven't discussed? Okay. Next, Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Art?
Nothing in addition this evening.
Excellent, well, thank you for the update on the goals, Art. Michelle?
Two quick ones. One we already talked about was just the municipal empowerment act that the governor filed, just that we'll be tracking that to see how it changes as it goes through the legislature, and we'll certainly work with our legislative officials to, to make sure that we're expressing our priorities and about that. And two, we held the rating agency calls today for the upcoming issuance of bonds and bands that we expect to, to do next week. They went well, and we should hear about the ratings early next week.
Excellent, thank you. Tom?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Bill?
Just one thing, I have the, sadly, to report that Jim Taylor passed away recently. Jim was a longtime Hingham resident, a very well-liked individual, not only within our community, but also within our police department. He was a Air Force veteran, a lieutenant within the police department. I think every new officer who came on during Jimmy's time on the department just talked about what a wonderful mentor he was, what a wonderful friend, and what a just a great, great officer he was to our police department. I'd also note that a lot of people don't know this, but Jimmy was very involved with the Saint Vincent de Paul Society, which is a society that gives money to those in significant need, and he was a driving force behind our Saint Vincent de Paul Society chapter, and just a wonderful guy. And on Thursday, the town hall flag, the Hingham flag will be lowered to have staff to honor his service to our community, be lowered here in front of town hall and also at our fire station. So, thinking of Jimmy's family tonight, and what a great guy he was.
Excellent, thank you, Bill. Joe?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, I'll just add that I attended the trustees of the library meeting last week, and we'll be meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust tomorrow. So lots going on all around town, and grateful for, for all of our volunteer service. Next on the agenda is executive session. Executive session under Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire Chief Steve Murphy and Police Chief David Jones. And two, approval and/or review of executive session minutes pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Seven, Section Twenty-Two A, and Twenty-Two G. The board will not reconvene in open session after the executive session.
So I make a motion that we do enter into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire Chief Steve Murphy and Police Chief David Jones. And second, approval of, approval and/or review of executive session minutes pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Seven, Section Twenty-Two A, and Section Twenty-Two G. The board will not reconvene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We will move into executive session. Thank you.